All right, are we all ready? It's six fifty-nine, I can't start yet. I'd like to call the order this regular meeting of the Boston Spa Central School District Board of Education for June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone who is here in person, welcome those who are watching on the live stream, and for those of you who are here in person, if we need to evacuate the room, there is the entrance into the hallway, and behind me in each corner, there are exits to the outside. First up on our agenda is our recognition.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I would like to welcome the Board of Directors from the Boston Spa Education Foundation to be presenting some grant awards to recipients in the district.
Hello. As many of you are aware, the BSEF was funded, founded in nineteen ninety-six to raise, manage, and distribute resources to educational enrichment projects throughout the Boston Spa Central School District. Funded projects must be educationally enriching, innovative, creative, and include a plan for continuation beyond the foundation's support. This spring's grant cycle saw grant requests from almost every school in the district. Tonight, we are pleased to present grants to five worthy projects. The Spring Two Thousand and Twenty-three Grant Awards totaling seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars went to Matthew German, who was granted four hundred and thirty dollars for a function machine to make learning math fun and engaging at the middle school. Sarah Gunner-Morfoot was granted three hundred and ninety-one dollars for yoga mats and yoga bricks to use in the library at the high school to provide a place where students and staff can focus on self-care and increase productivity. Beth Van Vulcanberg and Heather Thomas were granted seven hundred and thirteen dollars for cameras to use with the Wood Road Yearbook Club. These cameras will also be utilized for projects by the art department. Gina Ralston, Amy Snyder, and Holly Rumel Jackson were granted seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for flexible seating options to keep kids engaged in reading instruction at Gordon Creek Elementary. Jeffrey Gargano was granted five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars for physics lab equipment to provide quality, hands-on learning for middle school and high school students in eighth-grade science and physics courses as they implement new curriculum. This funding is being provided through the generous Fred Reiner's Memorial Grant for Education Enrichment. Congratulations to all. Our next grant cycle will be fall, two thousand and twenty-three, and please be on the lookout for any BSEF fundraising events to support our continued efforts.
Thank you so much. He's gonna make us squeeze together. Do we need to get in two rows? We getting two rows, maybe? I'd just like to thank the Education Foundation. It's just an incredible partnership. It's been incredible support for our district over the years, and they really are a vital part of our school community. And again, thank you very much, and I know that our staff always appreciates the support and the grants you've given out over the years. So, thank you again. Does that conclude our recognition?
It does.
Okay. Next, we have our first public comment period. We have one person signed up. The, I'm gonna read our guidance, as I always do every meeting, for public comment. "Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at board meetings is encouraged so that the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually. When recognized by the board president, will be asked to approach the podium, state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes. Speakers will be notified by the board president when his or her time is expired. When we get past the two-minute mark, I will ask to please conclude your remarks. The board and the district staff take the public comment very seriously, however, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. The board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment. The board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. To achieve this, speakers will not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public. Will please not use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs, and will please not disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior, either during the speaker's assigned time or at any other time during the meeting. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, and any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in the matter of health and safety measures, the superintendent of schools." So, please, Elon Schwartz, if you could come up, and we'll have to speak at the one podium here, we don't have our, our normal speaker's podium there, and please address your remarks to the board as a whole.
Thank you. My speech here is exactly two minutes long, so it's just gonna hit that mark. My name is Elon Schwartz. I am a student here at Boston Spa High School. I'm in twelfth grade, and I live here in, in Malta. And today, I'm going to be talking about sexual themes in, in the high school, and actually, in the school district. Over the recent years, there has been an uptick in mental illness and sexual confusion among the youth across the nation. Now that radical gender ideology and alternative sexual lifestyles are being promoted by our schools, this has left many parents worried about what their children are being exposed to. When I walk into my school, I see signs and references to gender and sexuality everywhere I look, year-round. The school bombards students with new-age sexual ideologies and propaganda, justifies it by claiming that it, it's to maintain an inclusive environment. While most of us agree that the school should teach students to be kind to one another despite their personal opinions and preferences, the constant emphasis on homosexuality and transgenderism is not fair for the parents who want such sensitive, personal, and sexual subjects to, to remain between them and their child. Students should be taught to be kind to everyone without emphasis on any specific group of people. Lastly, New York State law allows for boys to use the girls' public locker room if they identify as the opposite gender. Only a few years ago, a group of girls in the ninth grade complained to me that a fellow male student stripped bare-naked and flashed his genitals in front of all the other girls in the girls' locker room. I happen to personally know that boy. Just because the state enforces a policy does not make it morally right to follow. In conclusion, stop pu, stop pushing sexuality onto your students. Stop dividing people into categories of sexual preference and opinion. Let parents keep sexual subjects such as homosexuality and transgenderism between them and their child, and don't allow boys to sexually harass girls in the bathrooms. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Next on our agenda is our student government report.
Good evening, everyone. Last Friday, the junior class hosted a successful spikeball tournament, and last Saturday, the seniors hosted their prom, and it was a fantastic night. As we are coming to the end of the school year, there are many senior events taking place. On Friday, there is the senior parade at six, and on Monday, there will be senior send-off during the last two blocks of the day. Student government met today to discuss homecoming for next year, which will be in late October. And finally, we want to congratulate everyone who was recognized tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And does it, we have any questions for our student government representatives from the board? All right, well, thank you again. It's a very busy time of the year for our seniors and all of the student governments in all the grades, and we thank you very much for all you do, and you may excuse yourself from the meeting if you so wish. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting?
Second.
Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved. Next is our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. So, tonight, first part of our superintendent's report, we have a K-12 special education update. So, if I could have Chris Jensen, Alicia Backus, and Dana Sisk come on up to talk a little bit about the exciting things from the world of SPED.
Thank you to our superintendent and to Board of Education members for allowing us to report out this evening. It really does seem like only yesterday that we were here in front of you, but it was actually January, and we're very proud to take you through, you know, some of the things that we told you we would do, and so you can actually see what we've accomplished this year. Just very quickly, Chris Jensen, I serve as the interim Special Education Director, and I've been incredibly fortunate this year to work with Dr. Dana Sisk, who is the Assistant Director for the secondary level, and Alicia Backus, who is the Assistant Director at the elementary level. Just a quick reminder, Dana started July first of last year, and Alicia started, I think, a couple days before our board presentation in January. And I am incredibly pleased with the amount of work and dedication of these two and what we've been able to accomplish. What I'd like to do as we go through is, the first slide in particular will look very familiar to you, because we showed it to you already, and it just is a reminder of the lens that we always use in special education for all of our decision-making, and it really looks the same as it does for all of our students in Boston Spa. We want our kids to have, be able to equitably participate in their school, and hopefully it can be their home school, so with their siblings and kids from their neighborhood. So, that's our first priority whenever possible. We certainly want them to have access to high-quality instruction, and lastly, we want them to be able to have the opportunity to achieve at a level where they can earn a diploma and be on their way to a meaningful pathway after graduation from high school, be it when they're eighteen, or for some of our kids, they are allowed to stay until they're twenty-one. So, going through it, I think when we look at the slides tonight, you'll be updated on the way we've expanded our programs this year, the training that we've started for our teachers, the professional development to support those new programs, and lastly, the partnerships that I think we've been able to re-establish with a lot of our parents. And I say that only because, and I know you're probably tired about us referring to COVID and our year, what seems like a lifetime, but a few years in a virtual environment, but we had populations of kids that that was incredibly hard for, and it was almost impossible for them to access learning during that time. So, we really took a step, what I consider a step backwards, and we had a great group of parents, and we tried to open that dialogue with parents that are willing to do that. You know, what, how can we better meet their needs with their students that are in this population? So, we've done a lot of work with family partnerships at both levels, and I think we have some great plans to do that more so even in the coming year. So, with that said, I have the easy slides. I'm gonna turn it over to the elementary, and we're gonna take you through that, and then the secondary level, and we'll finish with what we hope to accomplish moving forward to next year. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. So, we wanted to talk about how we are continuing that continuum, it's expanding. If you look at what we've had in twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-two to twenty-three, and then what we're going to have for next year. The direct consult teaching provides that more individualized support for our students, and we're really looking at trying to allow for that combination of services when needed, if they're needing math resource, if they're needing AIS support, if they're needing related services. So, only two of our buildings were able to provide DCT in twenty-one, twenty-two, and currently, DCT is in three of our elementary schools, and for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we'll have DCT in three elementary schools, K-five. So, this, this decision was made to move to that direct consult teaching model from integrated co-teaching in the elementary, and it's allowed for more opportunities for our students to stay in the general education classroom with support. If you look at, we are creating that autism classroom, the six-one-two, that will be starting for next year, and we're really excited about that program to be able to support our students in the elementary that have that need. So, we've had a lot of meetings. If you look at the meetings that we've had since May of twenty, of thirty, May thirtieth, we've had six hundred and ninety meetings so far. So, you can have a meeting for a CSE or for a 504 for a request for review, an initial eligibility meeting, a transfer meeting, there's many different reasons that we've had some meetings, but we've had a lot so far this year, and we'll continue to meet the needs of our students and make sure they're the appropriate program and the best for their needs. Now, I'll turn it over to Dana.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, at the, at the secondary level, when we, when we spoke with you in, in January, we talked about some of the changes that were happening this year with the continuum, and then as we move into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, when we start next year, I'm excited to share with you that at that point in time, we will have a complete continuum at the middle school, grade six through eight. So, we currently have services for, for grade six, seven, and eight, for all of our, our four core areas, for our integrated co-teaching, for English, Language, Arts, and Math, for our special class, or our fifteen ones, our behavior management, our alternate-assess classroom, and then our resource and resource connections room, but the one area that we do not have the continuum completed for this school year is in the fifteen-one Science and Social Studies. So, for next year, we are going to have these courses, and just so that you can see the need that is avail, that we're fulfilling, you can hit the, this year, we don't have any students in the fifteen-one Science eight or Social Studies eight, but next year, we're able to provide this support and the specially-designed instruction as the students need it for thirteen of our eighth graders that would not have had it otherwise. So, this really helps bridge the gap for them between seventh grade and ninth grade so that they have consistency and continuity in the applied fifteen-one special classes so that they, so that we can ensure that they're successful, they're getting the curriculum and the content that they need, and that they can be successful in their program. At the high school, we have, we have a wide array of the continuum at the high school, and what we took, what we're taking a look at for next year is, we are adding the ICT Government and Economics for our twelfth graders. What we were finding is that while we're building their capacity and we're building their independence as they move through high school, you know, these classes are still really important, they need them to graduate, we want to make sure that we're providing as much support and specially-designed instruction for them as we possibly can, so that will be available for our students next year in addition to applied biology. So, right now, in our, our science continuum at the high school, we have ICT for Biology and Earth Science, and we have an Applied Physical Science, but we don't have a fifteen-one applied class for Biology, which is an, which is a course that students need to take for graduation, it's a Regents exam that they need to pass. So, this provides students with that opportunity that require that smaller class size, that specially-designed instruction, a little bit of a slower pace, a few more modifications so that they can be successful in Biology, have the opportunity to pass that exam, and get what they need along with the lab requirement. So, the, the teacher that's gonna be teaching this is dual-certified in Biology and Special Education, so she'll be able to meet the lab requirement that the students are gonna need in order to sit for the Regents exam. So, we're real excited about that for next year. So, as far as our enrollments, we have eighteen seniors that are currently enrolled in ICT Government and ICT Economics. We have thirteen students going into the Applied Biology class as ninth graders from eighth grade, which we're really excited about to give them that opportunity. And then in addition, we also added a resource room at Spa Academy to provide an extra level of support for students that are at Spa Academy that need that, that little bit of help with executive functioning and pre-teaching and re-teaching so that we can maintain that level of support for them while they're, while they're at Spa Academy and not at the high school. And as far as our meetings are concerned, between the middle and high school, we've had a total of seven hundred and sixty-four meetings from September until May thirtieth. This, as Alicia indicated, includes our CSE meetings and our Section 504 meetings. We also have annual reviews, requested reviews, we've had a lot of transfer meetings this year for students that have come into the middle school and high school with IEPs and 504s, reevaluations, and then one difference that we have at the secondary level is we also have exit meetings for all of our seniors that are gonna be graduating, and then transition meetings for our students moving from eighth to ninth grade. So, we want to make sure we have all the programs and supports in place for them as they transition between buildings and out into post-secondary. So, this past year, that put us at around seven hundred and sixty-four meetings total for the, for the secondary level. And now, I will turn it back over to Alicia.
So, when I started, I was really fortunate to have some parents that reached out and really advocated for what they needed, which is great, and I know that Dana's had that also in the high school and secondary, middle school. So, we're really trying to create a stronger partnership with our families. We want to create a parent group, which has been really awesome because, you know, our parents are saying like, we feel left out of certain activities, we really want to be a part, we want more education, we want to be able to provide that education to other parents that are just starting in school. So, what we want to do is, we're gonna create a parent group, and we're gonna provide education and support and trainings throughout the school year to our parents. We have our first Parent Information Night, it's actually gonna be on June thirteenth, it's really exciting, at Wood Road at six P.M. We're gonna have somebody come and talk about transition support for OPWDD services so we can start that process earlier for our families instead of waiting until secondary, because there's a lot of programs and support that's out there that families don't know about, and we really want to provide that support earlier. And then, in twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're gonna have a Parent Information Night at the high school where there's gonna be different organizations that are gonna provide transition services and be able to speak and connect with the parents of students K through twelve. We're also going to be developing our website and parent education information page on the website also. So, in talking about the needs for our students with autism, in the last ten years, we've had a three-and-a-half percent increase in the autism classification in the district. So, we're noticing that need at the elementary level to provide more support for the different levels of autism classification. So, that new classroom will be able to support our students, and that's what we're really hoping for, that six-one-two that's gonna be starting next year. So, we've done a lot so far with training. We had Kelly Brock come in and talk to our special education teachers about ways to be able to support our children with autism. We are going to be continuing that training for all of our staff on how to implement the IEP, program modifications, testing accommodations, and then we're also having a training in October of twenty-three, twenty-three school year where we're gonna provide TEACH training, which is a specific training on autism for our teachers in the twelve-one-two program, the six-one-two program, and our related service providers are also gonna be able to provide that, attend that training, such a, such as our social workers. And so, during that school year, next school year, we're gonna provide education to our teachers on autism and other mental health diagnosis, and way to support their students in the general education classroom. We're noticing that need, and we really want to be able to support our, our staff. Now, I'm gonna turn it back over.
Could I just ask one question?
Yeah.
You said an acronym that I didn't understand.
Sorry.
OP something?
What did I say? OPWDD?
Yeah, that one.
Yes. So, Office of People with Developmental Disabilities.
Gotcha.
So, sorry, yes.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
So, before we talk about what we're gonna look to do next year, I have the opportunity to talk to you and share with you some of the accomplishments that we've had this year, which I'm really excited about because I think it really shows that the different programs and the different supports and the different things that we're doing that we have in place are really benefiting our students significantly. So, the first accomplishment is the, is the completion of our K-twenty-one continuum, the things that Alicia spoke about, the addition to the ICT and fifteen-one and the resource room classes that I spoke about. While we're still working on the distribution between the elementary schools, the supports are increasing, which is what's really important, but that continuum is there, so now it's just continuing to build within those programs to make sure that we're meeting the, the meeting the needs of our students. We have more continuity in transitioning, so this is something that Alicia and I have been working together on since she, since she started, because what we realized is, we needed to have more continuity and consistency with our students transitioning between buildings. So, we worked with our teams this year to transition students that are coming from fifth to sixth grade. Our teams put together a transition day where the fifth graders came to the, came to the middle school, they did a tour, they got to meet some of the teachers, so that was wonderful. We also collaborated with the fifth and sixth grade teams to discuss the needs of students and placements and different supports and service, because the supports and services do, do adjust a little bit from elementary to middle school, so we wanted to make sure that we had the correct plan in place as they walk into the middle school in September. So, we've done a lot of work there in addition to transitioning from middle to the high school, and then our transition and exit planning of our, for our students that are graduating as seniors or transitioning out of our eighteen-to-twenty-one program into whatever their post-secondary program would look like. We've had some additional curriculum implementation and teacher training, as Alicia alluded to. This particular piece has been focused in the elementary schools with the bookworms and the Eureka math program for our special class reading, our math resource room, and our DCT classrooms to make sure that they have a, a strong training program behind them. And then, last but not least, increased opportunities for students with IEPs. I, I've been, I'm really excited about this because I think our students this year have participated in a lot more things, and it, I don't know if it's just because I am becoming more aware of it, but we've had, we had our students that participated on the, the unified basketball team, or the unified sports teams. We also had students running track. participating in after-school extracurricular activities like the gaming club and all these different opportunities that they are now finding that are available to them. And we're able to provide the support that they need so that they can participate in those programs. So that's been really exciting for us this year. In addition to that, we've been building their capacity and independence. So we have case managers that are doing a phenomenal job at building transition plans with parents to decrease aid support, to build the independence and capacity of the students so that when they walk out of our buildings, they know that they can be comfortable and confident being self-sufficient. In addition to that, some of our self-contained rooms at the middle and high school specifically, in our behavior management rooms, we have, out of 21 students, we have 14 that are participating in general education classrooms. So they're not in those rooms all day long. They are going out for, maybe it's Humanities or it's an elective or their core classes. And at my last count, we had four students that are fully transitioning out of those classrooms going into the next school year. So that's really exciting because they're building their independence and their capacity. Their families are excited. The kids are excited. We're excited because we're seeing them make that growth. So really, in a- in a short period of time, in working with the building teams, because we can't do it alone, I think we've really made great strides and I'm really proud of where we've come so far. We have a lot to do, but I'm- I'm really excited that- that we've had the opportunity to share our accomplishments with you this evening. And now I'll turn it over to Chris to talk about what we're looking at for next year.
And I'll just go through a few of them because both assistant directors have spoken about certain ones. But the professional development plan, we certainly have a wonderful professional development plan that's district-wide. What we are trying to target are some of the trainings, not just for teachers, but for teaching assistants, aides, nurses, everyone who works with a student to make sure that they're getting what they need to be confident and be able to do their jobs in a more efficient way. I know the minute I say this, you're going to look at our special education website and I really want to discourage you from doing that. It's terrible. Shameful, almost. And it is something that we have until July 1st to fix. So with the next, I don't know, three weeks, we're going to work really hard on that because we want it to be a resource. We want it to be something we're proud of as a school district that people can see everything that we have to offer, that parents can use it as a resource. So that- that is a major priority that we have. In March or April, I lost track of 2020, Kathleen Skelly and I were charged with working with a consultant to not only start over with a special education handbook, but also to create an MTSS, so our multi-tiered system of supports. So staff in general would have easy access to that information, covering everything from regulations or best practice to our district procedures and the supports in terms of the forms or the policies, things that they would have an easy way to just go to it and find it, have links to trainings and different things. And I think what we've talked about is the importance of we've- our curriculum was so new, particularly at the elementary, and we've had such turnover. It's a good time to go back and use some days in the summer to revise that or just take one more look at it and push that out again, if I can use that word, with the building administration and on to teachers. I think it's just always good practice to continue to revise and make sure that it's- it's what it needs to do. The other one that's important to me, when we talk about learner characteristics, we've called them various things through the years, a profile of a learner. But what we're really looking at is now that we have our continuum, we need to help our teachers have a better understanding of what the characteristics would be for each program on that continuum. And there's no, again, there's no one-size-fits-all. No student would meet all of those characteristics. But I think it would be a good guideline or a reference for people to better- and when I say people, our special education teachers who are looking at making recommendations, even from fifth to sixth, or if they're looking at, you know, maybe they're a DCT teacher, a direct consultant teacher, or an integrated co-teacher, and they're wondering or questioning whether they're meeting students' needs in that environment or they could be better met in a 15 to 1, for example. And that would at least provide them, I think, a starting point to have that discussion with people. So that's really important to me, that we have it completed and aligned with our curriculum, our continuum that we have now. Again, we talked about the continuous work with curriculum. I think we've done, and if I can look at the elementary, we've put a lot of effort in to trainings with, for our direct consultant teaching environment and likewise with the rest of Gen Ed. One of the areas that I think we need to revisit are our 12-11 programs. And those are our students that are New York State alternatively assessed. And I would say for maybe at least the last 15 years that I'm aware of, we've used Unique as a curriculum. That's the name of the curriculum. It no longer meets the needs of our kids. And the population is, they both have alluded to. It does change over time. And, you know, 3%, for example, with autism, does not seem like a big increase. But when you talk about the levels, that's why I should put the slide up, to show you the different levels of autism. When we're seeing more kids with significant needs, we need to know how to meet those needs. So that is an area where we will target. The other areas that I think needs a good look as well is we have at our Milton Terrace for our elementary, they do a really nice job with curriculum in the eight ones. And it's very consistent with what you would see in DCT or a Gen Ed setting. We need to take a look at middle school and high school to make sure that those are rigorous enough so kids can have the opportunity towards earning the diploma types that they should be earning. So those are our, kind of our direction in terms of that for next year. Dana has already spoken, and I think very well, regarding the transition programs and supports. The other big area that we, I probably neglect speaking of as much as I should, is the CPSC. So when our kids transition from, you know, from a preschool environment where they're receiving programming to five and they come to us as kindergartners, that's a huge transition time as well in making sure not only that we have students where they need to be, but that parents have an understanding that CPSC is very different from CSE and so that we kind of can help with their expectations. So that's another area. And lastly, you know, we've already spoken about it, but it's so important to us that we really have a comprehensive program for our parents and guardians. And, you know, parent training, for example, again, I'll use the autism example. It's a state mandate that students who have that classification, that they- there should be a parent training component. We've done it sporadically and we tried to meet that, but I think we need to be more direct and really be able to demonstrate the opportunities that we've provided for parents, for that in particular. And, you know, likewise, I think we'd like to do more with just really feeling that we're supporting our parents. We have another, you know, a couple categories. I hate to use that word, but students with attention deficit, hyperactivity and related disorders. Students, we're seeing a higher frequency, not just in special education or with 504s, but in our general population, of students with anxiety and related disorders. So we want to be able to do more in terms of education to try to be a support for parents and acknowledge that we really need to work together and collaboratively to help students. So that is our work for next year, and I'm told that we can rest a little over Fourth of July weekend if we get our special ed website done. So I thank you. Certainly, we're open to any questions, and thank you for letting us present.
Well, thank you very much for the comprehensive overview. And yes, do we have questions from our board members?
Yes, you mentioned a couple more acronyms. Just want to, if you could just explain it for me. CPSC versus, and I think I know what CSE is, but I'll let you.
I do, and I- we are all terrible about using those. We have a Committee of Special Education, so that's CSE, and we have a Committee for Preschool.
Okay.
So that's the difference. The other one, I don't want to steal your thunder. You're going to ask me what TEACH stands for?
I saw that, and I said, I know they did not spell that incorrectly. They spelled it incorrectly on purpose, is what I meant to say.
I was hoping you would ask, because that's why I carry this pink card.
Okay.
Because even though I know what it is and I've participated in the training, I have to read off the card.
Okay.
Because what it stands for is Treatment and Education of Autistic and Related Communication. And I don't like the word, but the acronym is Handicapped Children. It's a little outdated, but I think it's a fabulous training. And I participated six years ago with members of our 12s, elementary, middle and high school. And we had some teachers that would do more of a resource model or a direct consultant or integrated co-teaching model. And it really, it's a three-day training. It's a huge commitment on the district's part, not just for teachers, but for teaching assistants and aides and related service people to really, I would say, rethink how they approach that population. They're with, it's out of the University of North Carolina at Shackle Hill, and it's been around since the early 70s, almost as long as I have. And it's incredibly effective with this population because it really targets and it takes teachers through everything from the actual physical environment in the classroom and what it looks like. And it sounds so simplistic to say, but it's so routine that this, you eat in the cafeteria. You, and I, Brian told me not to move around, so I'll be really careful. You eat in the cafeteria. You do your work in this part of the classroom. This is your area where you take your break time. You know, that to a schedule to specific tasks. And it's a different approach to the work. Everything is paired, so you never just give verbal directions or written directions. Everything's paired with a visual for the students because that's the most effective way. And a lot of things for our students that are the neediest, they need tasks broken down, sometimes even into two to three-minute intervals or trials. And it's that level of repetition that they need to be successful. And it, you know, I could give you different examples, but that is for, that is what those kids need. And when you do it correctly, you see an increase in what they're able to do. You also see a decrease in behaviors. So, you know, you- you wouldn't have the kids, in theory, being so upset or dysregulated with, they wouldn't hit that frustration rate that they do by doing these activities. So thank you for letting me go on a little bit about that. Because I'm very, that's something we're going to do and I think it'll be a game changer for many of our staff members.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know that this has been a work in progress over this year, and I can tell just by your energy and enthusiasm how much you all are passionate and care about this and just wanted to say that it's evident and to keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for saying that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Other questions? So I have a question. There were slides about meetings held at the elementary and secondary level. Are those numbers referencing meetings about individual students or groups of students? Do they involve parent meetings? Are they meetings without parents? Can you characterize what we're counting here?
We are actually counting for CSE, for Committee of Special Education, those are the number of reviews. So they could be an annual review for students who are determining their program for the following year. And so you would have, by regulation, you have to have their general education representative. They're their teacher. You have to have a special education teacher. And in some cases, depending on the purpose of the meeting, if you're reevaluating them, you would need a psychologist present. If a student receives services like counseling services, the social worker would be invited. Likewise with speech or OT or PT. And parents, of course, are not only invited, but their input is sought. They, that is a big part of the CSE decision-making and even the 504 Committee where it's really a conversation and we're supposed to come to consensus about what's the best program for a student. So, and with all those meetings, what we didn't say is we have made every, we've taken every opportunity to be as efficient as possible. So in some cases, we're able to combine the types of meetings that we have. There are, you know, I won't call them outliers, but we do a lot of manifestation determination hearings and that's related to student discipline in making sure that student rights are being represented and that where our IEP is supporting them. We determine whether their, the behaviors, you know, that what they were, that referrals were from, are they related to their disability? So there are a lot of reasons why we have meetings. But we're speaking specifically of when parents, student, if it's age-appropriate, and the team come together to formally meet. So thank you for asking that.
And yes, and thank the three of you for your leadership and support for this program.
Thank you.
So I have one other thing. I wanted to call your attention to the memorandum of understanding. It's Resolution 576. I want to provide just a little bit of background of that. So Ed Martin, over the years, has worked on a family reunification plan. And so this particular MOU, we've entered into an agreement with both Saratoga Central School District and Burn Hills Central School District on essentially a family reunification plan. So in the event that we have a crisis situation at any of the school districts or any buildings in the school district, that necessitates an evacuation. So law enforcement says, you know, we go into a lockdown. Law enforcement clears the building, but we need to reunify students with families at a separate location. The plan is going to be Burnt Hills would relocate to Boston Spa. Saratoga relocate to Boston Spa, and Boston Spa relocate to Burnt Hills. And so working with the Sheriff's Department, if we were in a crisis situation like that, the receiving school would have ample time to dismiss the building. And then the sending school, who is going to go into the family reunification, would have full access to the building facilities, parking. Law enforcement would set up command centers at that particular building. And so it just gives us an option, an opportunity to have a close-by area that can accommodate. So the buildings that would be the reunifications would be the high school. For us, it'd be the high school, middle school complex, be Saratoga High and Burn Hills High. Because that would allow, you know, if we had to move thousands of students, use the classroom spaces, you know, the health office, counseling. So that is basically the rundown of what that MOU is.
Thank you. And I understand that there are still some details to be worked out with our various partners that would be involved in this. And the plan would be, once some of those details are worked out, we have more information, potentially going into the next school year, we would have more communications and information out for our- our parents and guardians and caregivers.
Yeah, so the three districts are going to get together this summer with members of the Sheriff's Department to work out the logistics and just finalize the details once all these MOUs are board-approved. And then we'll be communicating out some specific details. Not all the details, obviously, but the pertinent information to our- our community members and stakeholders.
And thank you. And this is incredibly important work and we hope that we never ever have to use it. Any questions on the superintendent's reports from board members? Thank you. Next on our agenda is committee reports, which I don't believe we have any. All right, correspondence to the district.
So we had seven total, four car, excuse me, four phone calls, all regarding student matters. And we had three emails, two regarding student matter and one regarding the flag raising ceremony.
And correspondence to the board. Since the last meeting, the board has received three emails, two regarding extracurricular club activities, one regarding the middle school. Announcements, Mr. Williams.
Just a few things to point out, as you already know, it's a very busy time of year for this next, really, two and a half weeks. Tomorrow morning, we have the Clean Tech Early College High School Graduation Ceremony at 8:30 tomorrow morning. So if you're able to swing by Tech Smart, it's always a nice ceremony. Usually the ceremony's within an hour and then they go to the project exhibition after that. The students explain their projects. So it's always a really nice time to learn more about that program and see the great things the students are doing out there. Again, 8:30 tomorrow morning. Tomorrow night is the senior awards night. Tomorrow night is the senior awards night where the high school will present all of the senior awards. So you saw some things tonight, but there's a lot more that'll be handed out tomorrow night. Again, seven o'clock in the auditorium. And then on Friday night, the students will have their senior parade where the high school seniors will be driving through town safely, starting at six o'clock and having a parade with everybody cheering along the sidewalks. That's Plan A, anyway. So that'll be Friday night. On Sunday afternoon is the village-wide birdhouse festival. So if you haven't been part of that before, it's an activity downtown to bring everybody together and they, they celebrate all the birdhouses that everybody's been painting and working on all year, including our students in the buildings, both the middle school kids building the birdhouses as well as the younger kids decorating the birdhouses. There is an award ceremony at one o'clock and the superintendent will be there to accept an award for the district. And they'll also be giving out some of the awards to the students. And they are still looking for volunteers. So if you're interested in helping it, one of the challenges is to have some folks that will do the large bird puppets and wander around downtown with these big giant puppet birds. So if you're into that or know somebody who's into that, they would really appreciate some help with that. And then on Monday, the twelfth, is the last day of regular classes here at the high school. So things are moving along quickly. The seniors will be dismissed early with the kind of some traditional activities they do with the seniors on that last day on Monday. Next Wednesday, we'll have the staff retirement and tenure reception here in the library, again, starting at six o'clock, recognizing everyone that's retiring this year as well as the tenure recipients. And then Thursday night is our final parent program of the year. It's the under the, under your nose program. So parents can learn more about different things their children might be involved in. The prevention council will be here again, seven o'clock in this room for that presentation on the fifteenth. And the following Monday, we have no school because of Juneteenth, so we won't be here then. And your next meeting is the twenty-first. There are obviously a lot of ceremonies that last week, so we started putting together a list of them. So the board members will see that in front of you tonight. There's some other copies on the back. It's also on the front of the website now, but we'll continually update that as we go through the next couple of weeks as things get, get interchanged around. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Questions from the board members? Mr. Williams, please don't go away. Any questions from the board members? The birdhouse ceremony in the village.
Yes.
Is there a timeframe for that? I know you mentioned one o'clock ceremony.
Right, the entire day is eleven o'clock to four o'clock. So it's all kinds of, they have ice cream social, they have face painting, they have Miller's barbecue going on. So there's a lot of different activities. And then at one o'clock specifically in Wiswall Park, I probably didn't say Wiswall Park, they'll have the actual ceremony there.
And can you confirm that tomorrow morning for the early college, high school ceremony, roughly eight o'clock to eight-thirty is a refreshment period?
I can neither confirm.
Ms. Snow is here.
Ms. Snow, Ms. Snow will answer that question.
You are confirming?
Yes, there are.
All right, that's important to mention.
Coffee.
Including coffee.
All right.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Just one, one point. So for the right under your nose, it starts at seven o'clock. That's the presentation. But actually, they'll have the mock room set up and parents and whoever, whoever comes can go through that room at, starting at six-thirty to look for different items and whatnot. So seven o'clock for the presentation, but if folks want to get here early to go through the room and see what they can find, that'll start at six-thirty.
Right, and so this is the prevention council helps put this on. And what we're referencing is they have a room that is set up with various items that could be related to drug use or other behaviors that are undesirable. And it allows you to go through and see if you can identify how some of these are very cleverly hidden. And it's a very good resource for parents to try and keep up with some of the things that are out there. Old business, any old business? Then we are on to new business. I have a motion to approve resolution number 575, approval of the 2023-2024 Board of Education meeting dates.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So just to comment that our meetings are as they usually are during the year, first and third Wednesdays. The reorganization and the one meeting in July is Wednesday, July twelfth. And then, as usual, in February and April, there's slight adjustments for the school vacations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 575 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 576, memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 576 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 577, bond resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this? We do need a roll call. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Turbiak?
Aye.
Mr. Jarek?
Aye.
Ms. Barker Flynn?
Aye.
Ms. Rout Bart Baskin?
Um, aye.
Ms. Whitmer?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Resolution number 577 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 578, award of bid, custodial supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 578 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 579, award of bid, teaching, office and art supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 579 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 580, award of bid, science supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 580 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 581, award of bid, special transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 581 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 582, agreement, professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 582 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 583, agreement, professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 583 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 584, budget transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 584 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 585, placement of students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 585 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 586, placement of preschool students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 586 passes. Resolutions number 587 through 608 are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education action. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions number 587 through 608?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda, resolutions 587 through 608 passes. We do have a walk-on resolution. Resolution number 609, field trip Spanish exchange program. Since it's a walk-on, I will read it in its entirety. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Ballston Spa Central School District to grant permission for the high school Spanish exchange program to travel to Spain, March 27th, 2024, through April 6th, 2024, be and is hereby granted. May I have a motion to walk on resolution number 609, field trip Spanish exchange program?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It is approved to walk on resolution number 609. I have a motion to approve resolution number 609, field trip Spanish exchange program.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We pass resolution number 609 and I have to say that this is absolutely wonderful. So this was a program that we did every two years, I believe. And then since 2020, it's been suspended and it's just absolutely great that our students will have this opportunity and we are able to do this again. Any other new business? Do we have any of our associations represented? I do not believe we do. Oh, and we have our PTSA president, who I think promised that she was not appearing again because you were done and retiring, but here she is. So please, welcome. We're great to see you.
No, no, no.
Please, come up to the podium and. And Brian will adjust the camera.
I'm Yvonne Byer-Tee. I'm the president of the high school PTSA, as most of you know. I was not going to come back, but we had such a successful after-prom this past weekend that I just wanted to thank the community, the administration, the board members that helped and the parents especially who came in, in the end. And we had so many volunteers and everything went so smoothly. I can't say thank you enough. So still looking for a president for next year and the year after. Still looking for a treasurer. So if you're interested, please contact me. But thank you, community and everyone, again.
Well, thank you. You can come anytime and deliver good news.
Oh, and we are having refreshments at the, at the senior send-off. So we're, the PTSA is supplying Kona ice for the seniors and whoever else is there.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other PTA announcements?
Oh, yes, the Milton Terrace PTA had their last meeting of the year last week. They voted in officers for the 23-24 school year. Current VP Adrienne Snell will be president next year and current president Kate Cottrell will be vice president. Gillian Savoy will resume her role as treasurer for next year as will Jessica Curley as, in her role as secretary. The last Friday was the beach party and it was very successful. Over 200 people were in attendance. Special thank you to Joe Shaver for volunteering to be the DJ and to all parents who helped. Upcoming events, the end of the year barbecue for families